Please take your seats. We're going to get started. Good evening. As we get ready to begin our candidate forum, I'd like to take a few moments to thank the Beach Weekend for the use of this beautiful venue, and the Greater Fort Walton Chamber of Commerce, and the Emerald Coast Association of Realtors for collaborating and bringing this event to the citizens of Fort Walton Beach. We'd also like to thank R.J. Murdock for live streaming the event on Emerald Coast TV. Our moderators for this evening are Sherri Salas, Executive Committee Board Member for the Emerald Coast Association of Realtors, and Melissa Garza, Governmental Affairs Director for the Emerald Coast Association of Realtors. It is my honor to introduce the candidates participating in this evening's forum. While there are seven individuals running for City Council, five, or excuse me, six are able to join us tonight. Please join me in welcoming Brandon Bishop, Logan Browning, Jason Harwell, Benjamin Merrill, Debbie Riley, and Travis Smith. Additionally, we would like to acknowledge David Schmidt, who is running unopposed for his seat and is unable to attend this evening. He's asked us to share that he welcomes communication from his constituents and encourages anyone interested to reach out to him at 850-685-0631. The format for this evening is as follows. Candidates have one minute for introductions. Candidates will have two minutes to answer the questions posed to them. Candidates will have a two-minute closing statement in which they can address or elaborate on any topic and/or give their best reasons to earn your vote. Without further ado, I'll turn the floor over to our moderators.
Thank you very much, Maria. We are going to go ahead and begin with the candidate intros. There is a countdown clock here. You guys have one minute to go ahead and introduce yourself to our audience, and we will begin with Brandon Bishop.
Well, good evening. My name is Brandon Bishop, running for Fort Walton Beach City Council. I appreciate all of y'all coming out tonight to listen to us. So I grew up here in Fort Walton since I was about 12, 13 years old. Moved down from Alabama, moved in with some family members, opened up a family-owned business, the Army-Navy Store. So, two years ago, I decided to run. My first time running, didn't know a whole lot about everything running, was kind of late to it, and learned quite a bit from around the city and from meeting people and getting different ideas. So I do a lot of stuff with the public safety. I go and ride long with them to see how they work their shifts and stuff, the Fort Walton Beach Police Department, and also the Okaloosa County Sheriff's Office to see how they operate stuff. So I'm asking for your vote on March the 11th to vote for Brandon Bishop. So I appreciate y'all's time.
Logan, please.
Good evening. My name is Logan Browning, 31 years old, happily married to my wife, Meredith Browning. I have three of my five daughters here tonight.
You're good, sorry.
Woo, alright. Spent 10 years active-duty Army before coming home back to Fort Walton Beach. Took an internship with the city. After that, shortly after the internship with the city with Ms. Kim Barnes at the City Clerk's Office, decided to take a position with the city manager at the time, Jeff Peters. After that, I was offered a position to be the Director of Performance and Marketing for a couple of car washes between here and Panama City. So I took that job. Hope to get you guys' support in March 11th election.
We're having fun with the countdown clock from the chamber, so give us just one second. Alright, Jason.
My name is Jason Harwell, and obviously, I'm running for your Fort Walton Beach City Councilman. This is my second time running. I have lived in the community for roughly 15 years. I have two daughters that I raise, and also, I help raise my three-year-old niece. I am the founder of an environmental organization, Erase the Trace Okaloosa. A lot of y'all are familiar with that organization due to the cleanups of homeless encampments, the Storm Dray Mural Project downtown, and other activities and things that we've put on throughout the community. I am also a professional sand sculptor. The thing about that is, I started working with sand because of the last election. I started with a castle company for a flexible job to be able to run for City Council. I perfected it. Now I own my own business. I'm invested. I want to invest more, and I want your vote on March 11th for your City Councilman.
Benjamin.
Good evening. Appreciate you guys coming out. My name is Ben Merrill. I grew up here. I've been married to my wife, my high school sweetheart, for the last 22 years. I'm a combat veteran. I joined the Army right after high school. It was 2001, so 9/11 happened. I didn't really have a career path laid out. So, yeah, I joined, went in. We came back here. This has always been home. We have two boys. They go here. We're local business owners, and owning my business here and growing up here and being a part of this, I don't know. We just hit a stage in life where we didn't want to complain when there was things going on with the city. I think the city's great, but I thought it was a great time for me to dig in, roll up my sleeves, and tackle some projects and some things that I want to see with the city. And so that's why I'm running for City Council. I look forward to your support on March 11th.
Debbie.
Thank you all so much. I graciously thank Ecar for inviting me here. I thank all of you, the voters, the people, for coming out and just supporting all of the candidates. I'm homegrown, born and raised here in Fort Walton Beach, Florida, attended the public schools here. I have attended the local college, University of West Florida. I have a master's degree in social work. I spent a lot of my journey in life has been working with children and families throughout the county. And so I'm very blessed to have three children and five grandchildren. I'm so blessed to be able to run for office again. Again, this is my story. This is my journey. This is my third time around. So vote Debbie Riley, March 11th.
My name is Travis Smith. I am a current Fort Walton Beach City Councilman. Born and raised here my whole life. Married my wife, raising my two kids here, who will live here their whole life. This is the only town I will ever know as home. So I believe I'm as invested as anybody could be. They're not here tonight because apparently Disney World is more important than me running for City Council. Shocking. But I'm excited to, you know, kind of finish what I started. Initially, probably didn't have the intent of running the second go-around, but something else lit a fire underneath me. And, you know, graciously, my wife is all on board and kind of pushing me through this and saying, "Hey, go finish what you started." So I'm excited. We've got a lot of good programs that we've got coming up from the city that we need to push over the finish line and get done. And I'll be pretty happy to see that happen if you guys will vote for me on March 11th. Thank you.
Alright, we're going to begin our question-and-answer portion of the evening. The candidates will have two minutes each to answer questions. We did a little bit of an icebreaker, so we have a question for all of the new candidates. And then Travis, I will give you a question as an incumbent. So everybody does have two minutes to answer the question. And we are going to be starting with Logan. Alright, Logan. What have you been doing to educate yourself about the city operations, its needs and its issues?
I would say that participating in council meetings, watching council meetings, and then just the education that I learned while I was with the city is what's getting me prepared to take on this role.
Thank you. Jason, you have the same question?
Alright, so I would also say watching the council meetings and attending when I'm available to attend. Also, just being engaged with the community, always have no reason to make contact with the directors of certain departments, whether it be Park and Recreation, because we're trying to do a community movement. So I would say that just being there, associating, and being in the presence of the council, and engaging citizens, listening to their concerns by putting out feelers on Facebook just to be able to give them something to answer and engage. Which, I would say that that has given me what I needed in order to be a little bit more, what is it? I lost the word. That is what I feel as though is equipping me to help run the city in a positive direction and a positive change for our citizens.
Benjamin, same question?
Yep. I think up here, I see a lot of familiar faces next to me because we've all been at the recent council meetings. You know, as soon as you decide to get in, I think you, something sparks that fire. Something sparks the interest to run, and then you go, wow, that's such a small piece of what this takes the more you start to dip your toe in. And so, yeah, we're just trying to get experience, gain knowledge if we get the opportunity to serve on council. So I've been to the meetings. I've talked to former and present council members and asked, you know, what are the key components of this job? What do I need to know? What do I need to do to prepare? A lot of them tell me, like, you know, relax, you'll learn along the way. But they also gave me some really good pointers. Also, I run businesses, and, you know, something I do in my own business is I go talk to the people that work for me. And I'm like, what? You're here every day. You know what's going on. What can we do better? So I've talked to several people that work at some level in the city, and I get their perspective, and I've been able to get, you know, their points of view as well. So, yeah, there's a lot more to this job than, you know, I initially thought. But as I go on and I continue to learn, I look forward to the opportunity if given the chance. Thank you.
Debbie, your turn.
Thank you. I'm totally 100% for the community, for the city of Fort Walton Beach. So what have I learned? Again, I'm going to go back to my journey and my story, and it has always been the community. I've been so blessed to be able to meet so many different families throughout the city, throughout the county. I've had 25-plus years' experience working with the people, working with the people and listening to their voices, learning the things that are most disturbing to them. And most of the folks that I've worked with doing my life works, they just want to have a better quality of life for their families. And so my working with those families, listening to their needs, and when I listen to them, I engage them. I'm not selfish. I have no self-interest. I don't want to build a resume. I'm a community organizer, a community leader, and a community worker. I believe in giving back to my community. I believe in partnerships. I believe in our local businesses. I believe in investing in our local businesses. And this is my third time around. Well, guess what? They normally say the third time around is the best time. So I'm running. I'm willing to work for the people. I'm willing to work and listen to their voices. I want them to have a better way of life, and I want them to have their voices heard and so they can play a major role in being a partner in the community. I have gone to the city council meetings throughout the years. I've worked in the community throughout the years, and I feel like that I can be a contributing factor to making our beautiful seaside community a wonderful place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Brandon, I'm going to go ahead and let you round out that question. Do you need it repeated?
No. So I also attend a bunch of the city council member meetings. I've been to probably, over the last two years, probably a majority of them with a few times and exceptions. But so I'm active in their meetings. I listen to what's going on. I read all the stuff about the city that's online, the agenda packets and stuff, to kind of keep my mind and everything of exactly what's going on. I go around. I've been doing a bunch of door-knocking the last election, this election, engaging with a bunch of citizens because that's what Fort Walton's all about. It's about the citizens of Fort Walton Beach. It's not about what I want done. It's about what Fort Walton Beach wants done and what the voters want done. And that's the reason I'm running, is for the voters, so they have a voice that represents Fort Walton. Also do a lot of ministry stuff. So I deal with, I teach and preach at my church. I do a lot in the nursing home events. So I engage with people. And that's the reason I'm running, is so that I can get out there and engage with you and hear, "Hey, what's your idea for the city? What would you like to see within the city or see the city not do?" Because again, it's all about voters of Fort Walton Beach. So I appreciate, I'd love to earn your vote on March 11th.
Alright, Travis. As the only incumbent, what do you consider to be your biggest accomplishment from your time on City Council? And how do you feel that you shepherd that goal forward?
Wow. I'm going to be more than two minutes, I guess. You know, I got to be honest with you. I kind of felt like I spun my wheels the first two years up there because I was typically on the minority side of the voting board up there. And, you know, it tends to get frustrating. Then we had another election, and things flipped the other way. I think one of the bigger projects that we haven't seen yet, actually, that was, I saw Mr. Holmes in here. Sorry for calling you Mr. Holmes, Mike. But, you know, that, right when I got on there, I think it was, I don't know if you call it testimony or whatnot, but we had a potential to lose 12 acres of the city. Two of all things a car dealer. You know, and that vote went the right way. It went 4-3. And I had to think, with me being up there, is one of the reasons why the city was able to keep its hands on it, and we're going to have an expansion there. One of the big reasons I ran is, is my goal was, is to make sure that the tax dollars got to the people and flowing all the way through all the city coffers and getting down to the residents to see their money get put to good use. So I don't, Tiffany might be able to elaborate, but last I, I knew it was like an $8 million project that we have coming back that's going to be a fantastic expansion to the rec facility. So, I mean, I think when that thing comes, that'll initially be probably one of the better projects that I think that the city has done in a long time that actually gets down to the end user, which is the citizen. You know, so I'd probably say that right now, but, I mean, there's a lot of projects on the horizon. And one of the big pushes is around the mound, and we made a big move towards that at one of the last meetings. So we advanced that by, from what I understand, 18 months to two years. So I'll be excited to see that come together. But that'll probably be long after I'm gone.
Thank you very much. For our second topic question, we are going to focus all of the questions on the budget, and each candidate will have their own question. And we will start with Jason. Jason, how will you navigate maintaining competitive salaries for staff, including fire and police, with a new 3% cap on the city budget?
Alright, so when it comes to the budget and things of that nature, I won't sit up here and try to make you all believe that I know exactly everything in regards to that. I am very good at hands-on experience, getting thrown into fire, and learning to walk out of it. So my best answer for this question is to get on that council, collect the data, put it in one place, research, and just to see what I can do to make the impact and see what I can do to help the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Benjamin, this question is for you. How will you ensure that residents have a clear understanding of city spending and have opportunities to weigh in on major budget decisions?
I think a question like this comes down to transparency. To be honest, making sure the residents have a clear understanding is, is, I hate to say it like this, but it's as much on us as council to be transparent, as much as it is on the citizen to want to be aware. I think there's a lot out there. You know, every council meeting is recorded. Every council meeting is public. Every vote is public record. It's so important that our citizens get involved and make sure that their voices are heard. There's a lot of questions. There's a lot of, you know, I would say fear around the budget right now. If you work for the city, where the city's going to go, what it means with the charter amendments that have passed, and how the council, how effective the council can be. So I think the most important thing is we continue as council members, you know, those council members continue to work with staff and try to engage the citizens. When the citizens show up, make sure that we engage, that we answer the phones, that we respond to the emails, that we make ourselves available to any questions and concerns that the residents of Fort Walton Beach have towards the budget. But yeah, I mean, at that point, it's our job to work with staff, listen to staff, and as things are offered up and brought to a vote, that we move forward in the way that the residents want and what's best for our city.
Okay, next. Debbie, this question's for you. Do you think the new 3% cap on the city budget is beneficial? Why or why not?
Okay, thank you so much for your question. One, I'm going back again to my life's work. And I have had the honor and the pleasure to work with local government, state government, and federal government. So I understand government budgets. I really do. My thing is, I'm going to be totally 100% honest with you. I didn't agree on the 3% cap. Tell you why I didn't agree on the 3% cap. One, when you cap off your government budget like that, you're going to have to be projecting out three, four, or five years down the road, trying to figure out, because you've got to move with the economy. The economy, if the economy grows, then you've got to be able to align yourself with the economy. So when you cut that budget off and cap it off, if there is something unforeseen, almost like having a savings account on a rainy day when you might have something come up, and you've got to have available funds to be able to secure whatever it is that you're, you know, you're looking to secure. So for me, looking at capping off the budget at the 3%, okay. One, you do have, you have your employees. They have salaries. Obviously, you know, most of the time on a budget like that, you probably want to go to about 80%, where you can't go over 80% when you're spending for the budget. But you also have to give incentives for your employees. You have to retain. You need a consistent retention rate. You need to be able to hire a skillful workforce. And if not, you need to have fundings available for trainings. Now, at this very point in the way we live our life now, the workforce is looking for skillful workers.
Travis.
Thank you.
With the restrictions on the expansion of the city's budget, what can be done to continue to provide the services the city gives?
Well, interestingly enough, every year at the end of a budget season, we usually have a budget amendment. And that budget amendment usually rolls over a bunch of excess dollars that we have budgeted for positions, and it rolls it over into a general fund revenue account. So we typically always have an excess amount of money at the end of the year that we roll over to the next year into a general fund account that can be spent anywhere. So currently, right now, we're already funded to the extent that we don't need any more money. So I don't expect any services to have to be cut because we already have more than enough money. I want to say, I'd have to follow, follow up on this, but I want to say we pushed over $1 million of excess money that we budgeted for the previous year that we didn't use into the next year. So we have enough money in a budget. I don't expect any services would need to be cut unless we're going over budget, which, to my knowledge, to my knowledge, I don't know that we ever have.
Okay, thank you. Brandon, what other ways to raise revenue would you be in favor of, given the restrictions on the city budget?
Okay, so without sitting up there and seeing all the exact numbers, personally, take a look into where do we get needed stuff at? How can, as owning a business, you look at ways you could save money, you look at ways you can, you know, I can get one thing from this vendor for $2, I may be able to go to this vendor and get it for $1.50. So I'm into more looking at the numbers, looking, hey, where do we get certain stuff that we need around the city? Where do we get, how much do we spend for different vehicles? You know, let's be competitive. If one place is saying, hey, I'll do this, I have customers coming to my own business, and they'll say, hey, I can get this over here for this amount, can you price match? And that'd be something that would be beneficial and save the city money. In the long run, you can make more money and lower the cost of supply, different needed supplies. It could be anything from buying printer paper for the offices and buying different cleaning supplies, and overall, you may save maybe 50 cents for this product. But over time, it's going to add up if you save a little bit here, a little bit there. And so I would look at, hey, let's save money, let's see what we can buy supplies, and retain the employees that you have. It costs a lot to bring on the new employees and stuff, but get people who are invested in the city, who's been here for 15 years. You don't want to lose someone that's been dedicated to the city. And so I say maintain your employees. In the long run, you're going to make more money instead of having to hire this person, and then they end up leaving the city and having to hire a new person, and so therefore you can save more money. Thank you.
Thank you. And Logan, how will you go about setting budget priorities?
I think you set the priorities on what the people are wanting, you know? We've got a very smart staff that's already in place, that knows how the budget needs to work, how it's operating, money rolling over or not. We have different funds that roll over that seem like it's increasing the budget, that maybe it's not, and I think that we prioritize based off of things that the people want, that they're vocal about, and we go out and accomplish those things.
All right, and for our next topic, the questions will be centered around housing. And again, everyone will have their own question.
Okay, we're going to start with Benjamin. Do you believe the city is facing a housing issue? Why or why not?
Man, I would say in some ways, yes, but I think our nation also is facing a housing crisis. I don't think that you can isolate it to just Fort Walton. Across the nation, we've seen prices skyrocket. It came from COVID, just, especially in Florida, as people moved here, there was not enough inventory on the market, and prices went up. We had 0% interest rates. It drove everything, and now I believe there's still, we're still facing that problem, but now we have higher interest rates. So the prices have been driven up, and now the interest rates are sitting at, what, over 5% or 6% minimum? So yes, so I would be interested in looking at projects that could help curb that. We need affordable housing. That's definitely a huge problem that I don't think would be easy to solve. I think it would take, like everything in government, it would take time, but it definitely needs to be an issue that we're discussing and looking for options to fix.
Debbie, do you believe that there is a homelessness issue in Fort Walton Beach? And if so, what are some ideas you have to help craft a solution to this issue?
Yes, I certainly do believe that we are facing a homeless crisis in our city. One, just looking back down through the years, we have just, you know, not really had to tackle the homeless problem as we do today, and as we face an economy that is really making it very difficult for the citizens to be able to live, to keep a shelter over their head, to find work. So we are dealing with a homeless crisis. But for me, my goal would be, and I would like to implement this, if I am elected to sit on the diocese, homelessness is something that is not just people choose to be homeless. It's not like that. It really isn't. Sometimes we have to open our minds and our hearts and start digging for answers as to what is the root of the problem. Well, the root of the problem is we have to go back to mental health illnesses. That is something that we have been facing, not only in our beautiful city, beloved city of Fort Walton Beach, but across the nation, we have a problem with homelessness due to mental health illness. Have we tackled that problem in a realistic manner? Have we tackled that problem? Whereas we can surely say that, yes, we have available resources to handle it. No, we've not tackled that problem because some of us don't understand what it means to be homeless. And folks don't choose to be homeless. Sometimes they get in that situation, whether it's substance abuse, whether it's mental health illnesses, whether they've lost employability. There are reasons why, and we need to search and figure it out, and give these folks resources to cure this problem.
Thank you. Next question is for Travis. What responsibility, if any, does the city have in addressing housing inventory, attainability, and other housing needs?
To be honest, from my perspective, I don't think the city has any responsibility. I don't think it's incumbent upon us to use taxpayer dollars, you know, to supplement what private industry already can do. That's the great thing about the way our economy works. It's a free market society. If there's demand there, somebody will create a product for it. I believe we just, what was it, last year? Actually, for about five years, we've had about $1.5 million from the city of Fort Walton Beach out for affordable housing projects. And in those five years, not up until about the last year we were about to bring it back as income, did anybody even apply for the money? And we ended up giving, I think, you don't quote me on this, maybe a million dollars to the housing authority, to rebuild the housing authority and add a ton of units over there, which I'll have to admit, that place needed it. It was, it was about time for that project to be done. But when you look at the cost per door, the city of Fort Walton Beach, we don't have, we don't have the money cost per door to make any sort of dent. I want to say we were somewhere in the neighborhood of $80,000 a door. So $80,000 of taxpayer money gets one door. We can't make a dent. Probably the best thing for us to do is probably look at the regulation side and find a way to help these builders, you know, find creative ways to utilize properties that are existing or remove red tape to help them. But, you know, from a taxpayer standpoint, I think the private industry can handle that, and I don't think that we need to.
Thank you. Brandon, what potential opportunities have you identified that can be implemented to help with housing issues within the city?
So I've talked to a lot of correction officers that's up in Grassview, and generally, from my understanding, maybe I'm not 100% correct on this, but from what they told me, is whenever they release someone from jail, you know, whether it be a homeless person or not, they get a Greyhound bus ticket. And what happens generally, they can, the first stop is here in Fort Walton Beach, over here on Miracle Strip Parkway, the Shell Station, is that's their first stop. And what the Greyhound bus will do is, once they get off that bus, they're not allowed to get back on it. So it'd be worth working with the Greyhound bus and say, hey, let's allow them the opportunity to get back home. They may get off for a drink at the gas station, then expect to get back on, and they're not allowed to. And so therefore, it's dropping a lot of the homeless community off, whereas they may be able to go somewhere else where they've got some family members or someone who they know, instead of just getting dropped off at their first stop. And they don't all have the opportunity, and they don't have the money, you know? They can get out and there's, if a homeless person comes up to my business, I'll give them $10, $15, $20 to sweep the parking lot. So I think if you, if the local businesses would let them sweep the parking lot, you know, they could earn a little bit, be able to get on the bus and go to where they need to, where they want to go. So that's how I would address it.
Thank you. Logan, what is your overall opinion on short-term rentals?
Well, I'm a rental person myself. We've rented, we've never bought a home. Short-term, Airbnb, all of that stuff, I think as long as they're abiding by the rules and they're not a micro hotel, I do not have an issue with it. I think that it brings people into our city, which promotes our businesses, promotes our city itself. I don't want to see people coming into town to go to softball tournaments, baseball tournaments, and then turning around and go to Destin to stay the night. We don't have as many hotels as the surrounding neighborhood or the surrounding cities. So short-term rentals, I don't have a problem with, as long as they're not taking it to the extreme and hosting weddings or parties or turning into some sort of micro hotel where they're renting, you know, 50-plus people a night.
Thank you. And Jason, what do you see as the future of workforce or affordable housing inside the city, and what strategies would you like to see to keep people here?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. What is the future of workforce or affordable housing inside the city, and what strategies would you like to see to keep people here, so they're not moving away because of housing?
Okay, so, all right, so I'm a renter, and I know that the rent, it's getting expensive to live in the city of Fort Walton Beach. And when I ask people on social media, what are the reasons that they are leaving the city, a lot of those reasons are work, housing, and there's not enough things to do with their families. So I would like to be able to focus on those things, be able to get more things the families can do around here. I think that if we invest in our community, the families, give them things to do, they're going to want to stay here. We want to make this place the, where people are dying to get in, not dying to leave. And right now, we're kind of, we're losing our citizens slowly but surely, and I think that the way that we can get them back and maintain them is to make them feel like they're important, make sure that we're meeting their needs, giving them something that can entertain them, their families, that way they don't have to travel to Destin. Just focus on what we can do to make the lives and the quality of everybody's lives here better, and I think that that would help people stay.
Thank you. The next question we have is for everyone, and we are going to start with Debbie.
What qualifications do you think are important in a new city manager, and how can the city council improve the retention of that position?
Can you repeat that?
Sure. Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
What qualifications do you think are important in a new city manager, and how can the city council improve the retention of that position?
Oh, okay. So city manager is, you know, that's a big job. It's a really big job. You're overseeing all of the city employees, and of course, you're reporting to your diocese or the council. So qualifications to be a city manager, what do I think? Well, one, I think you need to have some type of background or experience in business or public administration. One, I know you really need to understand policies and procedures, you need to understand government, you need to understand mandated statutes. There's a whole lot that you need to understand, but you also need to understand the people as well. You need to have a good connection with your staff, you got, and obviously, your council, because you're reporting to the council. And for me, the city manager and the council should have a wonderful working relationship. They should be partnering and making sure that our city is getting the best quality of service. So should you have qualifications? Of course you should have qualifications as a city manager. That's a big job, a very big task. Should you have a formal education? I highly believe that you should have a formal education to be a city manager. Also, know that you must understand budgeting, financing, which finances is going to be a lot, because you've got to oversee that budget and make sure that everything aligns with everything. You've got to have a great relationship, again, with your council, and first and foremost, your staff, because your staff, it's not that you're managing the staff, the staff manage you. So if you're in that type of role, you have to understand that as well. You must be qualified, I think, to be able to give quality services.
Thank you. Travis, same question?
Leadership, I think, is the absolute unequivocal, most important attribute that a new city manager can have. We need someone that can create a positive environment. Attitude is everything. You know, we need somebody that has experience. We just got done sitting down with the headhunters that are, they're going out and looking for our new city manager, and the conversation was good, and, you know, I think that what we're going to see here for applicants is going to be unlike anything we've probably ever seen here in the city of Fort Walton Beach before. We have stepped up, you know, the amount of money that we're willing to spend to get a high-quality candidate, and, you know, in those conversations, it was, you know, it's pretty simple. You need someone to lead. We have the employees already. We just need someone to lead them. But we also need a city manager that understands how to follow as well, because ultimately, at the end of the day, the seven council members and the mayor are the leaders. And so they need to direct the city manager in the direction that they want the city to go, and then the city manager needs to be able to have the leadership skills to get all of the employees of the city to fall in line and everybody push in the same direction. We will get nothing done pulling in 12 different directions. We've got to have someone that has leadership that can get everybody pulling in the proper direction.
Thank you. Brandon?
So that's a really good question. I believe also leadership and someone who can be honest, you know, who can talk to the staff and bring back what staff says to council, and then be able to work together as a team. Having a business, I want my managers and my employees to, where my employees have trust in the manager, and then they can report back to their bosses, and we can work together to get things done for the city of Fort Walton Beach. Owning a business, I've never really wanted to hire friends, you know, and people who's been part of any kind of groups that I'm in, just because I believe that is a contradiction. You know, we just recently got a new interim city manager who's very closely associated with the same group, a bunch of the current city council members are a part of, and I think that's a big contradiction. I believe we ought to be able to sit up there and be able to communicate and work toward the same goals as a city. Let's grow this area, let's, you know, remove this or go for this. And I believe if the city manager can trust the city council, then it will go pretty far. If he's nervous every day that, hey, I can't trust them, you know, we're going to lose again, I believe you ought to be qualified. You know, I look for experience whenever I hire someone, someone who might have been in the same business, maybe ran a bigger city than Fort Walton, and I think a lot of it boils down to experience.
Logan?
Yes, ma'am. Experience, absolutely. I think a major thing right now is, well, one, who puts the citizens first, and also puts their staff first as well, because if you do those two things, and either on council or at the employee level, then you're already all in line. If council's doing what the citizens want, and so are the, you know, the city manager's doing what the citizen wants, then everybody's already lined up in their beliefs on what needs to happen. I believe that we have a very interesting, with the charter amendments, finding somebody qualified or the experience to handle those things is going to be slim to none. So just somebody who's equipped to take on that challenge and/or has some sort of understanding of what we've got going on here in Fort Walton Beach, I think that's what I would be looking for, is somebody who's willing to accept that challenge.
Thank you. Jason?
All right. So I would agree with what everybody else is saying. Experience is definitely one of the qualifications. Education, but I would also say that the person's energy. They can be well-qualified, but if they've got bad energy, that energy's going to bleed over to the employees, and so I think it don't, we need somebody that's going to be able to come in there, be impactful, be in charge, but also uplift and create an atmosphere that our people want to stay and work at. So that also helps with how to keep people in our city and also how to help keep employees. So energy. But at the same time, when it comes to qualifications, education, experience, and all that, you know, it's very important, but that was also one of the things that they kept saying about Mr. Peters when he was trying, when he was going for city council. Oh, it's not a job to be trained on. I think he did just fine. He wasn't what people were looking for, as they say, weren't qualified in the aspects that they were wanting, but he did great. So I think that all the energy, you know, experience, the way that you're able to manage and handle, interact with your council and your other employees, it'll all play a part. Thank you.
Thank you. And Benjamin?
Yeah, appreciate it. I think for me, I correlate things along with a business that helps me understand. I know the city and government is different, but if the city of Fort Walton Beach is a $60 million corporation, then the city manager is a CEO, is the CEO of that corporation. And the council would be the board that they answer to and that, you know, helps put in place the checks and balances. But there's a lot required of somebody in that position of a city, you know, this size. So leadership, of course, communication skills, whether valid or not, I believe, I believe somewhere in there, there is, there's, I think, a lot of fear and doubt in the direction the city's going, because people don't know what's happening after the charter amendments and how it's going to look. This is, this is what I'm learning as I go. I think a city manager that comes in there and can assure his staff and assure the people that work for the city, that Fort Walton Beach is going to continue to grow, we're going to continue to thrive, we're going to find ways to continue to move forward. Management, municipal management would be big. That's, you have to know what you're doing. This is not a job, I think, right now, where we're at, where you would come in and cut your teeth at. You know, you would, we want somebody that comes from some solid experience. I personally want somebody that is community-focused. I want their vision of Fort Walton Beach to be in line with what the majority of Fort Walton Beach wants. And, I mean, those are the main things that I would look for, you know, as we would continue to interview the next city manager.
Thank you. Our next topic is going to be infrastructure and quality of life. Each candidate will receive their own question, but not everyone will receive a question on the same topic. So this is an opportunity, if somebody else gets a question that you would like to speak to, that you can use your closing statement to address any topic that you did not get with your individual question, and we will start with Travis.
Travis, what current or future projects would you like to see tourism dollars go towards?
We actually got a really cool project that hopefully is going to come before council very soon here. Being a waterfront community and looking around and looking at the accesses that we have for our citizens to access the waterway, it's, it's, it's pretty piss-poor, if you ask me, for being a waterfront community. So before Jeff left, me and him kind of got together, and we put pen to paper and got the county to partner with us with some tourism dollars to expand the boat launch at Liza Jackson. It's got major issues down there with parking, with access, and stuff like that. So we have a program- So we have a program that's coming here real soon that is going to open up the access and give more availability to the people that live in this town to access the water. Our plan from there was, is obviously, he's not here anymore, so we'll see what happens if I can get re-elected and talk to a new city manager, would be to start looking at our boat ramps and our water accesses and start seeing what we could do about partnering with the county as well on improving all of that stuff. Because when you look around our city, you know, there's some fantastic neighborhood boat launches that are in dire need of repair. There's some fantastic water accesses and a bunch of neighborhoods around here that could be greatly improved for the use of our citizens. So that's probably where I would focus with the tourism dollars.
Thank you. Brandon, if elected, how do you see Fort Walton Beach evolving over the next five to 10 years? And what is your biggest priority to help the city achieve that vision?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. If you are elected, how do you see the city of Fort Walton Beach evolving over the next five to 10 years? And what is your biggest priority to help the city achieve that vision?
So looking at with the new city council coming, I think it's, the main job is to be able to grow and make it a better place. I believe, yeah, a lot of, we have a lot of waterways here which could be used and hosting different city events and stuff. And we look at the city parking lots and stuff whenever I go on vacations. I'm used to having to pay for parking lots. But I think it would be nice to have something, you know, if we end up ever having a parking garage or, you know, to help the city make some money, is to be able to charge out-of-state people who come here on vacation. Because whenever I go on vacation, I tend to dump money out, you know? Oh, we won't close parking? Pay for it. And be able to let your citizens park different places for free and then be able to earn money to, and again, hosting different events and stuff, you know? We got some vacant land, I see, over on Hollywood, where you can put something, you can do community garage sales and invite people to come and set up places to sell stuff. And just be able to use the city's resources and bring more money in. So that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Logan, this is for you. Fort Walton Beach has been working on revitalizing its downtown area. Is preserving local character important? And if so, how will you balance preserving the character and encouraging new development and investment?
It is important. You know, we're getting a new bridge. Hopefully, a round-the-mound project will be happening in the next four or five years. And I think it's just vital, you know, we would have to try to maintain the downtown structure the way it is and try to build and grow the way it is and to where they're all in line with one another. That would be the way I would want to do it. I'm not sure how we tackle that with how the round-the-mound's going to go. There's a lot of unknown with it. But I would definitely, definitely want to keep the structure in the way that it is and keep Fort Walton Beach, Fort Walton Beach, but also improve it so when you're coming over that beautiful new bridge, it's a warm welcome to Fort Walton Beach.
Thank you. Jason, how would you maintain or enhance the partnership between the city and our military bases?
How would I maintain or enhance the partnerships with our military bases? Constant engagement, communication, I would, programs and events, things that we can come together and work together on. I'm not really sure what our military and the city, how they actually interact with each other to be able to properly answer the question. But I just feel as though the more engagement we have, the more conversations that we have, the more understanding we can get and the better that we can work together, whether it's with our city residents or our neighbors of our city. The more conversations, the more understanding, the better we can have quality of life for everybody.
Great, thank you. Benjamin, what are your thoughts on the pontoon boat liveries? And do you think any action should be taken?
That's a good question for me. So I own and operate a livery, and mine's in the county. I'm on Oaklusa Island, but a lot of people I know, a lot of people that I have relationships with run in Fort Walton. I've spoken about this at city council meetings. Look, we can sit up here and we can all pick one thing we'd love to take out if we didn't want it, or one thing we'd want to promote, but at the end of the day, it's a business and I am for small business. I'm not going to come up to council and say, well, I don't like car washes, so we're going to go find a way to put car washes out of business. I'm not going to pick any other, I'm not going to single it out. When it comes to liveries, my requirement would be that they operate legally, they operate safely. And I think I've checked most of my boxes. That's what I would want for any business. I would want to promote anything that's bringing money here that we're paying employees, we're paying taxes, we're providing jobs. I think it's a great thing for our city. I think, like anything, things need to be managed. But the management point on liveries, like any business, is that, are they operating legally within the bounds that they're supposed to operate? Are they operating safely? Now, we can extend that because this comes to a problem. That doesn't mean that I want people dropping their boats for rent at our public ramps. It stops there. To me, that would not be operating legally. And in many ways, almost 100% of the time, that's also not operating safely. Because do you have insurance? Are you, do you have all the proper paperwork? Are you training them properly? What happens in those situations? So if you are where you're supposed to be, if you have a spot and you're a legal business, then I am 100% in support of it.
Thank you. The next question is for Debbie. Tourism is a part of Fort Walton Beach's economy, but also strains infrastructure and quality of life for locals. How do you propose balancing these competing interests?
One, infrastructure for me is extremely important. And that's one of the things that I would like to move forward with in terms of, you know, growing our city and making sure that we have the best quality of life for our residents. For me, infrastructure, meaning whether it's our schools, is highly, highly important that we keep our schools built. I know we had the half-cent tax there, and for me, I kind of felt like that's just a Band-Aid to the problem because we have a lot of schools, like you can go South Florida, Miami, wherever, you're going to see the schools. We need to, we need to put more emphasis on our schools. We need to make sure that our children are safe. We need to make sure our highways are being worked on and making sure that the potholes, and not just in one neighborhood, but all the neighborhoods, that we make sure that potholes are being fixed. I look at our city and it's such a beautiful city. Okay, you've got the round-the-mound coming, but what are we going to do to make sure that the beautification is there for our city? Racks and parks, you know, we need to focus on that, you know? And a lot of our families like to play pickleball. They, we want to make sure that our green space is there. So there's a lot of things, I think, that in terms of the infrastructure for our city, which it is a beautiful seaside community, but I think we're lacking behind in so many other things that could be an enhancement for the city of Fort Walton Beach. I look at the, you know, our surrounding neighbors in the county, you know, even with Craftview. And I said it before, we have got to focus on rebuilding our city and making sure we maintain our city, make sure we keep dollars within our own community, make sure that we patronize our own local businesses because they are there. They're a positive image for this community and we need to keep focusing on making sure that the local businesses are being taken care of. We need to take our dollars and spend it within our own city to make sure that we're able to keep our city where it needs to be. And that's a part of growth, the economic growth.
Thank you. And for our last question and answer section, we are going to do a rapid-fire. Every candidate gets to answer the question and it's going to be very brief. You will see why. So we are going to go ahead and start with Brandon for the first question.
On a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being most important, how important is seeing the around-the-mound project to completion?
I'll go with a 10. I'd like to see it, I would like to see it be complete and to bring tourists over on this side of the bridge and keep their tax dollars here for the city of Fort Walton Beach.
Okay. Logan?
10 as well. I think there's some unanswered questions with it, but I do believe that we need it and it would be a huge improvement to the city.
Thank you. Jason?
I would agree at 10. I'm excited to see it happen. I want to see it go around and make our downtown more walkable, more family-friendly. That's, like I said, that's one of the biggest things that the citizens are saying. They want family-friendly things. And I think that would help us reach that goal.
Thank you. Benjamin?
I have to say a 10. No, a 10. It's a project that, I mean, it's already started, we have to see it through, it has to be done right. Yeah, so for that reason alone, a 10.
Debbie?
I'm looking down the road and honestly, I think it's a long time coming. I mean, once we get that, the round-the-mound going, everything in place, it's going to ease up the traffic flow. I think there's going to be a safer highway, roadways to travel. I think it's going to move people a lot more, quicker to where they need to be. It's, I believe it's going to be very user-friendly. I also think it's going to be a positive to our downtown location.
Debbie? Thank you. Travis?
10, so much the extent that I'm the representative for the council on the regional TPO board to help push that project over. And if you give me two seconds, there has been no route that has been selected yet. We will actually get that information come August or September. The final report on the PD&E study will be completed and signed off by the state of Florida in November. And the great news is, is we already got the design phase fully funded, if we get the grant that we partnered with the county. And that'll put it number one on the list. And at that point in time, all it is, is getting money from the state to do the construction. So it's coming as fast as it possibly can.
Thank you. Okay, for the second rapid-fire question, scale of 1 to 10, also, can you just give us the number and then we'll continue on? Thank you so much. So we're going to start with Logan. On a scale of 1 to 10, as development increases in the city, how important is it to maintain or expand parks, recreation facilities and green spaces?
10.
Jason?
10.
Down the line?
8.
Debbie?
10.
I would say 10.
And Brandon?
10.
Thank you. And for the last question, again, one-word answer would be great. We're going to start with Jason.
Do you support both of the half-cent sales tax initiatives?
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right, it is now time for closing statements. Again, candidates have two minutes to go ahead and give us their best reason to vote for them or to address any topic that came up that you would like to expand on. And we are going to go ahead and start with Benjamin for his closing statement. Again, two minutes.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, obviously taking any interest in this. I'll go back to kind of play off the end of the introduction. You know, just being a small business owner here, I got, actually got a lot of help from the city when I walked into the city. And then I also ran into some things, you know, I had to learn myself. There was times, I feel like as a citizen, I stood on one side of the microphone, I've been to council meetings, I've been to commission meetings, and sometimes I saw 100 people show up and I saw a change. And sometimes I saw 100 people show up and things voted, they were, it was already decided. And I'm not the type of person that will sit back and go, well, you know, I'm just going to complain about this. I just, it's not in me to, I'll complain about it, I will, to my wife. And then she'll tell me, well, you can sit here and complain all day or you can do something about it. So that it just, you know, to have the opportunity to come up here and serve, you know, for the interests of small business, for the interest of the future of our community. I mean, I'm downtown and a lot is happening. That's not the only thing that's going on in Fort Walton. There's a lot to look at, but a lot is happening down there right now. And it's important to me that it's done well, it's done right, that, you know, I'm not the most creative person. When we talk about how can we make our city better? How can we keep people here? How can we affect affordable housing? And all this stuff rolls downhill. And I think we create an environment where the citizens of Fort Walton Beach can start a business. They're going to bring the creativity. I'm very much for growth and preservation. So how do, we don't want to be, you know, I don't know if this will be my campaign thing, we don't want to be Destin Jr., I don't want to see a bunch of high-rises go up, but I also don't want to be the empty city that you drive through. So to balance that is what I'm looking forward to do.
Okay, Debbie, please.
Thank you all, first and foremost, for having me as well as all the other candidates and being, you know, willingly sitting there, listening to each one of the candidates. And I'm sure you all, you know, will make an informed decision on which route you want to go. I would hope to think, though, that I would be able to gain your support because what I can 100% tell you, I'm a fighter and I believe in fighting for the people. And if I am elected on March 11th, my goal is to fight as hard as I can for the citizens of Fort Walton Beach. I would like to be able to say that I have done my works, that I had, you know, intention of, the intention of doing it. I'm running for city council because I want to make a difference in your lives. I want to make a difference in the lives of the residents. I want to listen to the residents. I want you to have quality of life. I want you to be able to wake up every morning and say, you know, I'm so blessed to have a beautiful family, I'm so blessed to be able to live in the community of Fort Walton Beach, I'm so blessed to have the parks and the wrecks that I need for my children to can have a well-being and stay healthy. I'm so blessed to have the local businesses that are here because what? The local businesses are employing, they are employing, and they're employing workers every day. And sometimes we take it for granted, you know, we take it for granted that they are there, but they are employing our city citizens, they're partnering with the city of Fort Walton Beach. And so that's one of the things I want to focus on, is making sure our local businesses keep their doors open and not shutting them. I want to make sure, looking down the road, that our beautiful seaside community does not become a desert town. I don't want the doors to be closed. I want all the families and all the children to be able to say, it has been my honor to be a resident and be called a resident of the city of Fort Walton Beach, our beloved city. So for me, I'm ready, I'm willing, I'm pulling my sleeves up and I'm ready to go to work for you, the voter.
Travis?
Kind of feel like I'm having an out-of-body experience out here listening to you, Ben, because, I mean, I just, four years ago, I was sitting on the same stage, basically saying the same thing. And that's the interesting thing is, initially, when you get into this, there's this spark that gets you involved. And then when you get into it deeper, you realize that was 5% of the whole thing. You have no clue about what you've gotten yourself into and then you get involved in it and you see how important it is. You see how important that it is that we have council people up there that have had life experiences, that have made major decisions before because no decision, no matter what it is up there, is taken lightly. It affects somebody, some way, shape, form or fashion, in this town to the positive or negative. And unfortunately, no matter what you do, you cannot make everybody happy. And that is, that's the biggest weight that you carry up there. And so you do everything that you can that you believe, based off of talking to people and your experiences, that you know is right. And I've done that since I've been up there, I will continue to do that while I'm up there. I think you heard a lot of these guys say that there's no substitute for experience when we come with a new city manager. I think that there's no substitute when it comes to experience for what we're about to have to deal with with these charter amendments. And, you know, there is going to be some unintended consequences that come out of this. And you're going to need people up there that have been involved in financial decisions of a magnitude that we're going to have to make and find a way to fix these. Because make no mistake, we're about to do something that, to my knowledge, no other city in this country has done. And it is a serious thing. And so I'm in it for the long haul. I'm here to make sure that it has the least amount of impact on the citizens that we can. And I'll be looking for your vote on the 11th of March. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon?
Well, I'd like to begin by saying that I love my nation, love living in America. I love my state, the state of Florida here. I love living here in Oaklusa County. And most importantly, Fort Walton Beach. I believe we have a lot of potential. We're like any other city. We've got our downfalls, but the thing is, grow past the downfalls. I love our public safety, our police department. I've rode with them several times, seen how they worked. And we got very professional guys out there, professional firefighters. So I'd like to, I saw the firefighters. So I'd like to, I saw the firefighter chief a little while ago, thank him, didn't say the police chief. But I think our public service, you know, let's retain them, let's retain who we've got, let's keep our city employees, let's elect people out there whom they can trust with their jobs. And they don't have to go to work every day wondering, "Hey, am I going to lose my job? Am I going to get fired? Am I going to get let go?" Let's give them a city council that they can trust and that will bring positivity to Fort Walton Beach. So remember on March 11th, vote for Brandon Bishop. And if you have any questions, feel free, after we get done here, feel free to come up. I'll take down your number if I don't know the answer, and I will definitely get back with you. Follow me on Facebook, Brandon Bishop, Fort Walton Beach City Council. And look me up on my website, and I'd be happy to talk to you all about anything. So appreciate y'all's time. Thanks for coming out and listening to us. Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, to echo what everybody else is saying, thanks for coming out. I'm running because I fully understand the inner workings of the city and responsibilities of council, gained through knowledge of working for the city clerk and the city manager. And, you know, I, like Mr. Smith said, there's a big hill that we have to climb, and I feel like I'm equipped to assist climbing that hill with just knowledge that I gained over my, my time with the city. You know, I'm excited, I want to be a part of this. Dragging my kids out here and my wife and my mother-in-law and everybody else has come out to support me. We have, you know, I have a great relationship with most of the city staff here. I know every single one of them that's here tonight. I just want to continue to, you know, push, move this city forward and lean on those relationships, and I hope to have y'all's vote on March 11th.
And Jason?
All right. So thank y'all for hosting this event, to give us a platform to be heard a little louder. Also, big appreciation for all these guys. It's very nerve-wracking being on this side of the table. All right? So the fact that we're getting sentences out is good. So I just, like I said in the beginning, I want to invest more into this community. When I moved down here, I came from a very bad upbringing. Fort Walton Beach became my second chance at life, and I ran with it. I raised my daughters here, I invest my personal time here, I do Christmas programs to be able to benefit the children, to give back. When it comes to the average citizen, I feel as though I connect with them the most. My worries aren't your typical worries of most of your councilmen or politicians. I'm not worried about where I'm vacationing. I'm worrying about what bill I got to pay and what I got to lose out on in order to pay that bill to make sure my needs are met for my family. So I'm investing because I know what it's like to feel forgotten. And I want to make sure that everybody has a voice represented on the council so they don't feel the same way. I came from the bottom, I'm working my way up, and I want to bring the city of Fort Walton Beach with me. The monopolization of the council and the executive body is real, it's happening, and the way to stop it is in your hands. Vote Jason Harwell on March 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to closing remarks, I would just like to say it is our pleasure to welcome the seventh candidate, Sonia Vasquez, to the podium over there. She's going to speak to us for two minutes. There was an unfortunate RSVP mix-up, but she is here. We'd like to give her some time so that she can speak to you about her candidacy as well. Thank you, Sonia.
Hello, everyone, and I know you're ready to go home, so I'm not going to take, take up too much of your time. But I do want you to know, my name is Sonia Vasquez. I've been living here for 21 years. I moved here from Fayetteville, North Carolina. I work on the base as clinical, a supervisor of clinical and laboratory operations on Eglin, 96th Medical Group. I'm just going to just tell you a little bit about myself and what my plans are. I'm just going to jump to it. I'm a big fan of this quote by Maya, from Maya Angelou. "Nothing will work unless you do." Okay? I am a doer. I've been in the community, I've been doing work with the police department. I'm the CEO and founder of Speak Justice Extra. I have over 1,000 members up there. We go out and we serve the homeless. We've been putting a lot of footwork in here in Fort Walton Beach. A lot of people don't know me, but I've been doing the work here in Fort Walton Beach, okay? And I plan, whether I win or lose, I plan to continue to make Fort Walton Beach a better place. My platform that I'm basically focusing on is local businesses, affordable homes. My theory is, most of the people that live here, you know, I can say, you could bring 1,000 jobs here, but why good are the jobs if they're not paying you enough to actually live here? Most of the people that live here, we here, but the cost of living is here. Okay? We're drowning. So there need to be some, we need to strategize. I'm here to help bring the community more resources in these communities, because there has to be some change, because people are really struggling. When you spoke on homeless, it's going to be more of us homeless, okay? The cost of living here is extremely high. So any way that I can help, and I can't say it's just all about me. It takes a team, it takes a team to make a better community. And I don't plan on just sitting behind the seat or just going to the city council's meetings. I'm going to come to you. My plan is to be a workshops in these neighborhoods so you guys can sit down and talk to me and let me know what your needs are. Hey, affordable homeowners insurance. My insurance is sky-high. Sometimes I look around and be like, "How in the world do I do it?" I'm asking myself. And I've been in civil service for 28 years. I ask myself, "How am I doing it?" I guess by the grace of God, but there have to be some changes. I have so many people inboxing me, "Ms. Sonia, what can you do? Ms. Sonia, I want sidewalks in my neighborhood." We need to make sure, we need to make sure that we utilize our money properly, okay? We distribute the money properly in these neighborhoods that are in need. And I'm going to get off, I have a meet and greet, if you want to learn more about me and more about my platform, on Saturday at Pedro's at 3 o'clock. And please, please, I tell you, I don't walk the walk, I don't, I just don't talk the talk. I'm going to be out there doing the work, okay? So vote for me, not on March 11th. You also can come out on March the 3rd, early voting. I suggest you to come out, March the 3rd, and vote for Sonia Face and Vasquez, okay? You won't regret it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to thank our audience for attending, for our candidates for taking their time to share their vision if elected, and for our venue hosts, The Beach Weekend and Emerald Coast TV, Ecar, and the Greater Fort Walton Beach Chamber of Commerce for their efforts in coordinating this event. Please drive home safely, and thank you again for your attendance and participation. Thank you.